All right, we're live. All right. Welcome. We're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We are in our workshop and we do have a quorum. It is 6:45 a.m.
6:45 p.m.
6:45 p.m. Yeah, there we go. Even better. And no, that was not a typo, so it was me, all me. So first up is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda. I've got Councilmember Jones with the invocation. I've got Councilmember Kelly with the pledge. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Kelly. We have two proclamations. We have a, we're going to pop a video up for Council K9s, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we're going to take a look at consent agenda. We've got G1, approval of minutes. G2, Skyrim Studios Incorporated and the amount of $320,000 for the new artwork for the Public Safety Center.
I got a question on that. When are we going to see what the wording is going to be?
Somewhere in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a public meeting for that, right?
Good deal.
There are no other questions. We'll move on to item three, contract with Integrated Environmental Solutions. That's to follow up on the green space that we approved last year. Item four, contract for construction services for Corporate Drive, segments four and five.
We're getting there.
Yeah, get that done.
How long is that, how long is that construction time?
Quite like, about three years.
Three years, okay. Yeah, it's going to be a long haul.
Yeah, it's a big project.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of work.
Okay.
Item five, quit claim, a quit claim deed for quarter acre portion of the abandoned segment of East Main Street. Item six, professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn for All-Town Louisville Gateways. That's the design.
We'll, we'll be bringing back to you guys a conceptual design and pricing shorter, in the short term, mainly because it looks like the arches are going to be more expensive than anticipated. So we'll give you options and make sure you guys are fully bought into the option we're pursuing.
Do we have a technical college that's teaching that kind of stuff that we can send our designs and stuff to? We can get it out early.
Good, right?
It's not the design, it's the, it's the construction and the engineering required to span over the street.
Item seven, professional services agreement for Midway Branch Force Main. Item eight, landscape services for City Hall and the Visitors Information Center. Item nine, local project advanced help, what was that, what was that acronym?
La Pafa.
La Pafa with the Texas Department of Transportation.
Sounds like dessert.
Yep. Aesthetic improvements for 121 Business and Corporate Drive interchanges. So those are the panels as well as the enhanced walkway underneath Corporate. So it looks a lot like 407. Item 10, transportation consultation services agreement with, with ITS Incorporated.
How long is that probably going to happen in that contract in future?
That Holsters contract?
Yeah.
John Holsters? So it's a, we bring it back every year.
And how long has he had?
Gosh, we've had him since 2002. 2002. We'll say the amount of money we get from grant funding that he gets for us is significant. Yes.
And more than, more than. Item 11, economic development agreement between the city and TSMJV.
I have a couple of questions about that, Mayor. So this is a, it's about a million dollar investment if I'm looking at that correctly. Make sure that's.
They have to invest 27 million, right?
I understand. So it's a, it's an eight-year payback, just straight discount, that's 124,000 a year. So that makes us eight years to pay that back.
That sounds correct.
So there's about, yeah, so there's about 400,000 that we're going to be paying for real property taxes over the coming years. So once it's built and the property taxes go up, then we anticipate it will take approximately a few years to, to pay that off. But that cap would be that 400,000.
So, so when the 124,000 dollars a year, is that, I don't think I ever got, because property taxes go up every year.
Right, that's just an estimate based on, on the value we think that they're going to put down and then multiplying that across the 55 townhomes.
We've been waiting for that, but it never came.
It's just a big investment, so I'm asking the questions to get this ready company. Provide us with the city. Okay, good.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Item 12, consideration ordinance of the City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Lewisville. That's CDBG grant-funded residential rehab to waive that fee. Questions on that?
That's our fees.
Right. So having CDBG pay us to do a program that we want to have done seems a little double dealing, I guess. Or it just, it doesn't seem like we're maximizing the opportunity.
So the money would be going towards the project rather than paying for them.
And it's, well, it's typically not going to be much. If you have eight or 10 of them, then you've got to go through the process. For each one of them, it really can slow down staff time, is my understanding.
Is this a brand new program?
So our residential rehab program right now is dealing with the HVAC programs. It is a brand new program. We've been working on it for about a couple of years or more to get it done. So we just put it in place. And so the permit fees on this isn't going to be substantial, but there may be opportunities in the future to expand that program. And, and doing that only for residential, that's what this waiver will be for CDBG residential rehab programs. Right now, that's just your HVAC system.
Okay. And so how are we promoting this?
So our HVAC system, how are we promoting that?
How are we promoting this program? Because I, I think there's a huge need.
There is a huge need.
Yeah, so right now, our, our funding that we put aside, we had just adopted the program. I think we put enough funding for four, four different projects. I believe that was correct. So we have permit, we have, we put a call for anybody in the community, social media, that type of thing, people who are interested. We have more than enough, more than four, obviously. And I think we're whittling it down right now to who's, who's going to be receiving that. So I think there's going to be growth in this program, but right now, we've, just from our social media push, we had more than enough applicants to fill the amount of funding we have.
I thought we were doing 10 to 20. Did I not read that right?
I think it's future.
That's for future.
Yeah, I think we've allocated $90,000 and so it depends on the scope of work and how many projects we can do with that.
Okay.
Could be up to six. And then we have flexibility to, depending on how the program goes, to allocate additional funding.
So I got a call from a resident about that, that had some issue. I figured it was a federal program. They were like, they had, they felt it was very intrusive. I'm like, it must be a federal program to answer all these questions. But one thing that I got at night, who, who were the applicants? Were I think 11 or 13, or whatever the number was? Let's do a survey with them because the feedback that I got was the person would not try to do the application again. Because they felt, they felt a certain type of way. It could just be one person, but let's just make sure that that's not.
Absolutely. We'll check, we'll check into that, but you are correct with the CDBG funds. There are.
Yeah, and I, I think they need to be explained that, like, look, this is, this is what the feds need for us to do this. That piece may have been missing, but just make sure that, you know, it could be one person that, that didn't understand that and wasn't happy. I just want to make sure that's not the totality of folks. So when we roll it out again, we can fix the kinks we have.
Absolutely.
Is this one contractor or multiple contractors for this, for this part?
So the scope of work is being done by a third party that's partnered with the city. And hopefully when the RFP goes out, we have one contractor bid on all these projects.
So they will all go out together?
Super. Other questions?
All right. Consideration of fiscal year 24, 25 budget calendar. Consideration of acceptance of the resignation of Robin Johnson for place number two on CDBG. And we'll need to declare a vacancy and then we're going to have recommended appointment. I believe we have selected, or at least, I'm sorry, not council, but I think the committee that was looking at that one had a recommendation.
Yes, it was Akbar Alana.
One more time on that?
It was Akbar Alana.
Akbar Alana, okay. Any questions about that applicant? We'll move on to item I, reports, city council and staff reports. And we do have closed session tonight. So we have consultation with attorney on a couple of things. And we also need to button down personnel conversation.
Yes.
So get that, get that finished and off our plate. Any questions or comments? Work our way back up. And we are done with this part, so we're going to go into regular session at 7:00 p.m. Got about five minutes. All right, it is 7:00 p.m., April 15th, 2024, and we do have a quorum. Welcome to this regular session of the Lewisville City Council. First up on the agenda is our invocation with Councilmember Brandon Jones.
Please join me in a moment, a silent contemplation.
All right, it is 7:00 p.m., April 15th, 2024, and we do have a quorum. Welcome to this.
Okay. I didn't turn my phone off. I am so sorry.
Thank you. Except for Ronnie.
All right, and next up, we have the pledge to the flags from Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Kelly.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. And if I could have Chief Rollins, Ayesha Wahid, and Kathy Rice, representing, of course, our police, the United Way of Denton County and Cook Children's Hospital. All right. Looks like it's you and me, boss. That's perfect. That's perfect. We'll make it, we'll make it easy. So we have a proclamation declaring the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Month. May 9th of 2024 is Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards mental health and education and the support or treatment and recovery of. And whereas each resident, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness recovery and support prevention efforts. And whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. And whereas the residents of the city of Lewisville value their overall health and that of their families and fellow residents, and are proud to support observances such as May 2024 is Mental Health Month, and May 9th, 2024 is Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Now therefore, ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Month and May 9th as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Lewisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Chief, got anything to say?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor. The city of Lewisville, the Police Department and Fire Department of Lewisville have a pretty longstanding history with Denton County's Behavioral Health Leadership Team. And it's, it's a privilege to be here to accept the proclamation on behalf of them. So we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city and for the usage that we get out of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And having served on the Mental Health Commission for United Way, it's, unfortunately, we are chronically underfunded. And, you know, coming out of COVID, we've created a lot more challenges. But I am incredibly proud of the support that our police and fire department put out for the community, as well as the folks at our school districts who are bearing the brunt of it for, for our children. So they're out there, the resources are out there. If you need help, please just call. We will find a way to get you connected. Next up, we have a proclamation declaring the week of April 15th through 19th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And I need to have our public safety dispatcher, Kristy Fitzgerald, up here to accept that proclamation. Because she is amazing. And so is that whole team. So we'll do a few whereas's. But I can tell you that a few whereas's do not encapsulate this job of our public dispatchers. These folks are amazing. They are the backbone of our community, especially when it comes to safety. And I can't think of a tougher job, because you have no idea what happens when that phone gets hung up. And you probably will never know. And that's amazing that you guys can go through that. You can be with folks on their toughest day. You can get our offices and our fire department there, make sure everybody gets safe. And then you don't know how it ends. And that, that is amazing. Y'all, y'all are tough. It's awesome. It's awesome. And whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and public safety telecommunications are often the first contact our residents have with emergency services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents who telephone the City of Lewisville Emergency Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the City of Lewisville have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Now therefore, ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the week of April 15th through 19th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Lewisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And by gosh, if you know one, thank them, because they deserve it. Let's give you a hand. And your whole team. Did you want to say anything?
No, just thank you. We appreciate all of the support that we get from the citizens. It does mean a lot. So yeah, just thank you for the support. And, you know, we enjoy this job. We enjoy getting to help protect y'all and help, you know, send y'all help. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
That's awesome. We got a great team. Thank you. You got peanuts?
I can.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Yeah. You got it. There it is.
I am William J. Meredith, Lewisville City Council, place number two. Mayor Pro Tem, I am here with Bulva. She is a spade female. She has been here since March 1st. She was found at Lewisville's Walmart at 35 and Main. She is fiercely loyal. She is sweetest, most mellow girl. Come down to the Lewisville Animal Shelter and pick out Bulva. She is a one of a kind.
Well, that is just heartbreaking. Got to go get her. And if not her, go down to the shelter and find yourself somebody to love, because they will love you back tenfold. It is amazing. We love, we love our critters. And thanks to the animal shelter for coming up with such creative ideas on how we can get the word out. All right. Item F, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, I think we've got, both of these are general comments. So Mr. Lawrence Gard, is it?
Yes, sir.
If you would, please, sir. And your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Lawrence Gard, 1401 Primrose Lane, Lewisville, Texas, 75077.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening to everybody. For one of you, it's good morning.
I never live that stuff down.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you brought up the safety and the dog shelter and everything. The weather's starting to get nice now. I'm a, I'm a father of two, a grandfather of five. And my daughter lives in Lewisville, too. And we've been having this incident about animals, especially the neighbors. And they, matter of fact, they just got it no more than two months ago from the animal shelter. And you said, come here and get one, love them, they'll love you to death and everything. That isn't always the case, because sometimes, just like, everybody thinks their child is great. There's a bad apple on there somewhere sometimes. Not all families, but some, even the ministers and everything. So for the past week, I had this neighbor has a pit bull and is breaking through the fence, chewing the fence apart. And I have two young grandchildren live there that are 69 years old. Hasn't broke through, but it's tearing the fence apart. And you keep on screwing the fence slats in, and it keeps on coming. It pounces on the fence. So yes, one particular instance last week, I called animal control and they came now. They can't do nothing about it, because the dog hasn't gotten onto your premises. So I have all kinds of videos for the last weekend, pictures and everything. It's a very aggressive dog. Well, it just started last, last night, 8 o'clock. Here it comes. It's barreling through now. So I'm saying, I know the policy, the Lewisville animal policy says they can't get the dog until they seed on your property. I'm sure y'all heard about Duncanville mishap, mishap, have you? About the, the one-year-old child got mauled to death by dogs, German shepherds, whatever. And it's a mixture. I don't know if it's a mixture, but he said German shepherd. Killed today, 10:30 this morning. I don't want to take that chance with my children or grandchildren. And so you say is, okay, so they want pictures and everything. So I bring on video, and you go, oh, watch it if you want to. Because I don't know how to download stuff anyhow. And so I went there, and okay, well, we'll, we'll come out there. Well, supposedly, they gave him a citation to prove that the dog has rabies shots. Well, you know, that's a false thing there, too. That's just probably to satisfy me, because the dog just got taken from the shelter, like, two months ago. And you know they're all going to get rabies shots and spade or neuter given. But this, like, this particular incident, all night long, went back and forth, back and forth. Pit bull, through the fence. I shouldn't have to repair this fence all the time, because their dog is knocking the fence down. So they say we can't do nothing about it. But when it's after hours, that's when it happens. So isn't a picture and a video worth a thousand words? We need to look at, review this policy about animals, because are we going to wait till something happens to a child like they did today in Duncanville? Wouldn't that be all on all your minds? This is, is, it's not right. So I don't know, do I need to take, you know, I understand why we have a program on TV like Neighborhood Wars and stuff like that. Because some people got to take things in their own hands, and nobody wants to do that. We want help. Nobody wants to see their child hurt. Nobody. So the animal control told me this morning that, well, don't let your kids go outside. Well, no, I'm not going to let the kids go outside when they, if there's a dog back there. But who's to say the kids in their own private backyard playing and the dog comes through? You, you know, it's amazing, we have them on video. We, yeah, some of it's ring camera, but it's amazing, I got someone just by holding this. And are we going to wait for this kind of stuff to happen? It should be, the policy should be reviewed. And so I don't know if any of y'all, I imagine most of y'all have children, some maybe even have grandchildren, but you'd be scared to death. I'm scared to death. You know? Neighbor comes over and says, the very first thing, comes over and says, well, you're using the wrong screws. Okay, we got more screws and everything else like that. It's not the fence problem, it's the neighbor's problem. Like you said, safety, this is a safety concern. So we need to address this safety.
Yes, sir.
Dog video with Boomer, or whatever the dog's name was. No, that's not true. Not every dog is a good dog.
Mr. Gard, your five minutes are up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But we will absolutely have staff reach out and see what we can do to mitigate this.
Okay. Because I sure don't want my child killed or mauled or anything.
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate you coming out.
And you have a good day, and the rest of y'all have a good evening.
You do so well. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Elizabeth Flores.
Elizabeth Flores, 998 Regency Drive, Lewisville, Texas, 75067. A lot of you probably know me by sight. But I came up here to speak just because I work closely with the city in a capacity. And my concern is that on the board, I've been advised that certain signage is not allowed within the city, similar to the political signs that are placed outside right now as we come into voter season. I am very much a Parks fan. I'm actually going to make this quick, if not eloquent, as I need to get back to a baseball game. But I am seeing a lack of reaching out to the citizens of Lewisville, or I should, I should rephrase, maybe a lack of efficacy or efficiency with the current methods that are being used, such as social media, reaching the citizens of Lewisville. So when I've brought concerns of how are we reaching the Lewisville citizens? How are we getting information out to them? Oh, social media, social media, social media. Okay, I'll be honest, I'm probably the prime age and the prime demographic for social media use. I'm not on social media. I am busy with two kids. We do soccer, softball, baseball, and gymnastics. We're running around the city. I love the signage that Color Palooza, our banner flags, provide for various events that are coming throughout the city. You know, just like the political, you know, it's easy, it's on the spot. I'm in Lewisville, I see it. I'm getting information on the way. I'm not going out of my way for it. I'm not drilled in front of my phone for it. So I would like very much the city to consider allowing those signs, similar to the political signs out right now. So maybe no more than like garage sale sign size for city-sponsored affiliations or organizations, such as Lewisville Baseball, GLASA, so the Greater Lewisville Soccer Association, because they are seeing low numbers of kids signing up. And to me, that, it's not a lack of interest, because we, you drive around Lewisville, you see pickup soccer, you see kids in fields, kids in parks. I think it's a lack of, or I don't want to say a lack of, but maybe lack of efficiency in the current communication methods we're using. And so I would very much like the city to consider allowing those signs for maybe 30 days during, when it's soccer, softball signup time, or, excuse me, soccer signup time. Or, you know, it's, we're going into fall ball. Hey, please sign your kid up. I'd also really like to see these translated. Now, obviously, that's going to fall towards the individual organizations who they're trying to reach. But we got to get these kids outside. We got to get people outside. We strive so hard as a city to improve our city and get people out. And it kills me that these people are not seeing the information. And I know the Lewisville city website has some of these things, you know, in place. But I'll be honest, unless you're already involved in these organizations, you're not being targeted by ads. You're not, you know, going to the city website to find these things out is, I don't want to say pulling teeth, but, you know, it's time out of a very busy schedule. So for me, I'm a single mom, I work full-time. I promise you, going to the City of Lewisville website is not on my to-do list. So I would really like y'all to consider allowing these signs for, you know, stipulated 30 days, you know, a time period. Make sure these organizations are required to pick them up after this time. We do it with garage sales, we do it with Realtor signs, we do it with political signs. I would, you know, I just don't see a reason why we can't reach our citizens a little more efficiently. If they're Park fans and they're already at the Parks, let's throw a sign out there. You know, they're already there, they're already coming. And maybe they don't know about an event. Maybe they want to get involved, but they don't know how. Maybe they only speak Spanish. You know, I just really want to see a more real-time, in-the-moment, physical way of reaching our residents. And I've been advised that we don't, we don't allow that, just because we're worried about maybe litter turning into, you know, the signs turning into litter that nobody's going to pick up. So I would just really, again, just want to reiterate, please consider allowing those signs. I want to reach our kids, I want to get them off the screens. I want to get people involved with the City of Lewisville, you know, out of their houses. And I don't think social media or the website is the most effective means. These people are busy, they've got families. I know lots of other families like myself that, you know, and with the, just so y'all know, LASD actually stopped allowing these organizations to advertise or to take flyers to the kids. So the parents aren't getting the information anymore. So I don't know if y'all are aware of that, but that's out there, too, where, you know, a method that was effective now is no longer available. So my time's almost up. Please consider it. I hope to see y'all around. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Appreciate your service, and thank you for the ideas. City Secretary, are there any other comments?
No, sir. We don't have any ecomments tonight either.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, item G, Consent Agenda. All following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or ecomment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any requests for pulling any items?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Council, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. Item H12, Regular Hearing. Consideration of an ordinance of the City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Lewisville by amending fees related to community development block- Block Grant-Funded Residential Rehabilitation Programs. In August 2020, the City of Louisville allocated community development block grant funding designated for the Minor Housing Rehabilitation Program. The program was designed to provide heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, HVAC repairs, replacements, or installations for low-to-moderate-income Louisville homeowners. During HVAC repairs, replacements, or installations, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits may be required depending on each household's needs. Permits required to have a minimum cost of fifty dollars per permit that the HVAC contractor must acquire prior to work being performed on the household. The City of Louisville will continue to require permitting for households receiving assistance through the Minor Housing Rehabilitation Program. To ensure funds provided by the City of Louisville to the selected HVAC contractor are spent on HVAC repair, replacement, or installation rather than permit costs, city staff requests permitting fees listed in the ordinance to be waived for households receiving assistance through the program. City staff has written this amendment broadly to cover future CDBG-funded residential rehabilitation programs. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? All right, City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Louisville by waiving permit fees for certain residential electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits required for work to be performed as part of the City of Louisville Community Development Block Grant-funded Residential Rehabilitation Programs, providing for repealer severability and infective day declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen, Consideration of the Proposed Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget Calendar. City staff has provided a calendar showing the important upcoming dates for city council meetings regarding the city's budget process. The budget workshop is currently scheduled for August tenth, 2024. It's recommended that the city council approve the budget calendar as set forth in the caption above. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the budget calendar as set forth in the caption. Second.
A second. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item fourteen, Consideration of Acceptance of the Resignation of Robin Johnston, Place Number Two, on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, declaring a vacancy exists for Place Number Two on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, and an appointment to Place Number Two on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Say that five times fast. Resignation was received from Robin Johnston, Place Number Two, on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, and we had five applications that have been submitted meeting qualifications for service in this position. It's recommended that the city council accept the resignation, declare one vacancy, and consider an appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption above. And I'm going to editorialize just for a moment, five applicants. We are blessed that we have a tremendous pile of residents who are interested in being on our boards and commissions, because that was not the case, not all that long ago. So I want to thank residents, and I want to point out that, yeah, it does sometimes take a little time to get on a board or a commission, but we have other opportunities, including our education programs and our ambassadors program that we just fired up, for you all to be involved, other organizations within the city as well. So if you're having a hard time getting plugged in, absolutely talk to city staff, talk to anybody at this table up here, we will be happy to figure out how we can get you connected. But I know, boards and commissions, we're sometimes a little tight to be able to get you on them in a timely fashion, but I really believe that's because we have so many great residents who are stepping up to fill that need, so thank you for that. We do have both the council review team and city staff recommending Akbar Alana for this position, and so I'll need a motion to accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and appoint.
I make a motion to accept the resignation, declare one vacancy, and consider appointment of Akbar Alana to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes, six to nothing. Thank you. Item I, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Kay, do you mind if we start with you?
Sure. I have nothing to report.
All right, fair enough.
Except that on the website, the Animal Services website, there are some gorgeous, gorgeous dogs on there, so I'll get you one or two.
Councilmember Meredith?
Got some library activities for the week. Booked for murder, book club for adults, Tuesday, April sixteenth, two to three p.m., small conference room, no registration is required. Find Your Purpose for Teens Age Thirteen to Eighteen, Thursday, April eighteenth, six-thirty to seven-thirty, small conference room, first floor, no registration is required. Also, like to just thank Serv Louisville, Serv Dent for their event Saturday night, think it was a great event, great fundraiser for them.
Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I have a number of activities for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, a FAM Fest. That FAM stands for Food, Art, and Music, presented by the High Art Foundation, that will be on April twentieth. Black Box Songwriters Series, Angel White, presented by the City of Louisville on April twenty-first. Color Palooza coming up, presented by the City of Louisville on April twenty-seventh. And as always, on Friday nights, the acoustic jam session, usually in the, or often in the Black Box Theater, but it may move around within, somewhere in the facility. And then there are activities, there's an art demo with Dave, art demo with Dave Mask, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. First-time homebuyer guide, first-time homebuyer one-on-one class, presented by the City of Louisville and the Greater Louisville Association of Realtors on April thirtieth. And then Excavate Exhibitions, Unmasked, featuring the works by David Mask, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, and that goes on through May eleventh. Louisville Elementary Schools West Exhibition, presented by the LISD, April eighteenth through May fourth. And Emotional Roller Coaster, a solar exhibition by CJ Miller, presented by the City of Louisville, April twentieth through May twenty-fifth. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder to our residents that Monday, April twenty-second, is the start of early voting. It'll last through April thirtieth, and the polling locations are available on the city's website, as well as Denton County and Dallas County's website.
Thank you. Planning Department? Nada, nada, nada. I know, I know I got to pause right here.
The lake is full still, hundred percent, five-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-four-one feet.
Outstanding.
It's a lot of water.
It is a lot of water.
Building's still going up, things going well. Poured probably about a thousand yards of concrete in the last week or so, lots of flat work, going to be doing some of the decorative concrete around the building soon, so lots of concrete trucks rolling in and out of there, but it's going well.
Awesome. When, I've had a couple of residents ask about when parking might expand around the area. Is that still when the flat work's done, or is that even further out?
There's, there's some flat work being done, there's a lot of cleanup, there's driveways and things and connections, and then we have the old bank building that's going to come down, so when that comes down, that'll, that may open up some things as well.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a quick report. Actually, I wanted to recognize some distinguished visitors we have in our audience tonight. And we have a class from NCTC, Texas Government, if y'all want to stand up. So I believe we have ten students there and at least one professor with them, but I just wanted to thank them for their interest in local government and coming out to us tonight, and remind them that we always have internship opportunities, and once they graduate, to always come back and look at Louisville as a place of employment. Thank you.
And remember, local government still is highly functional.
Mayor and Council, last Monday, you might have noticed a little thing up in the sky, and while I'd love to take credit for lining up the moon and the sun in such a perfect way, that wasn't us, but we did have an event in Wayne Ferguson Plaza called Solar Bration. Wanted to share with you, we had about fourteen-hundred conservatively attendees at that event, which for lunchtime on a Monday is a very good turnout, but the main emphasis, while the eclipse is terrific, the main emphasis was to try and benefit our local businesses, the hoteliers, and the restaurateurs in Old Town. So rather than bring in food trucks, we worked with eight of our food and beverage vendors in Old Town who offered a Solar Bration specials, takeout specials. We spoke with them this past week, and they reported from Monday to Monday, increase in business ranging from thirty-four percent to a hundred and seventy percent, so they were very pleased. And then the hotels, when we spoke with them, they reported during, we spoke with nine of our hotels, our primary partners, and during those three days, six of the nine were above ninety percent, two more were above eighty percent, and one was just a nudge below, and they reported that is not common for those days. So we're very pleased with the outcome, and I guess we'll do it again in 2044.
We'll be here. Chief?
None.
Councilmember Kelly?
So real quick, the, I wanted to point out, we have Color Palooza coming up on the twenty-seventh. It's always a lot of fun. It's amazing to see what people are going to chalk on a sidewalk as well, so they chalk this way. But I also wanted to reiterate, so the past couple of weekends, I've come down to Old Town without an event. It didn't require an event. We just came down, we ate at a great restaurant, we ate at the Mexican Seafood Restaurant over here one time, we ate at Main Street Cafe once. I was so excited to see everybody, it was bustling, there's so many people out and around. It was fantastic. So don't wait for an event, there's so much to see and do, just walk around the plaza. Beautiful day, everything's in bloom, colored out, so, yeah, come on down anytime.
I'm going to one-up you, Patrick.
Of course you are.
Yeah. I think you should move down here. That's what I did, and it's been the best decision. We, I'm never leaving. I love living in Old Town. I did, I know we've had two people mention Color Palooza. I wanted to mention, since Mayor Gilmore was talking about ways to get involved, we do need volunteers still for Color Palooza. This is one of my favorite events of the year, not just the event itself, but leading up to it, because the whole, the whole area down here just gets blasted with color and all the yarn bombing, and I find, you know, like the fire hydrants are wearing outfits, it's awesome. So I just love it, leading up to it, but there's a lot of activities for people to do, but we need volunteers to make all that happen. I don't believe you have to be artistically inclined in order to volunteer, anybody can do it. So if you have some time and you want to meet some of your neighbors and do something really fun and cool, you can go to louisvillecolorpalooza.com, and there's a volunteer button there. That's all I had.
Okay, since we're on Old Town, if you come down to Old Town, make sure you back in park correctly. That is my pet peeve. I also want to kind of do my update on our Louisville, Texas application, because I've been getting some emails and calls from residents who've had concerns about different things, and I use the app regularly, and it is fantastic. You can track your issuer request, they follow up pretty fast, and you can see what's going on, and you can also see what requests someone else has in your neighborhood now. Additionally, you can, they just added for short-term rentals, so it's an evolving app as we get more, more use out of it, we can see our trouble spots or areas we need to improve on, help us out, help yourself out. So, you know, if you have something that's going on, you can show me the documentation, hey, I've done, I've done this on the app and nothing's happened, because I doubt that'll ever happen, and they give back to you really fast.
It's, go to your App Store, it's called R Louisville is the app, such as R Louisville, Texas. So we could drop that in, which, either one, if you're the great Android ecosystem, or you're on that other one, the fruit-based one.
The one that most normal people get.
City Manager? All right, I do have a couple of quick things. For those of you who maybe have heard me talk about native plants, we actually have a native plant sale going on. It's actually next door in Flower Mound this year, but we're going to work hard to get one here in Louisville. But on the twenty-seventh, if you just go over to the Native Plant Society of Texas and look up the Elm Fork Chapter, they're having their plant go early, bring a wheelbarrow, bring a cart, because there's people, that, people get a little serious about their native plants, but it's a great sale. And I think before our next council meeting, one of our council members up here is celebrating half a century on this planet, so I want to give an early happy birthday to Councilmember Jones, for all of his work that he does within the community. With that, I think we're done with reports, and we're going to go ahead and move into closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, SAP Chapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pending Litigation, Yuri Hayasaka versus Rang One Holdings LLC, DBA Wyatt James Builders versus City of Louisville, Texas, Case Number 493-01870-2023, 493rd District Court, Collin County, Texas. Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and Section 551.074, Personnel Regarding City Secretary Thomas Harris III. We are going to move into closed session.
All right, we're going to reconvene into regular session. It's 8:05. What actions do we have, if any, counsel?
One, I move to increase the city secretary's total annual base salary to $147,886. Two, amend the city secretary's contract to reflect this pay increase and clarify the timing of pay increases. And three, authorize the mayor to execute said amendment.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. There's no discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Yeah, we don't have any clickers. So, aye, aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
I move to settle Yuri Hayasaka versus Rang One Holdings LLC DBA Wyatt James Builders versus City of Louisville, Texas, cause number 493-01870-2023, by waiving the requirement to have a sidewalk between the townhomes at 100 through 110 Samuel Street and the street itself as required by section 94.8 sidewalks and trails of subpart 5 land development regulations of the Unified Development Code contingent on Rang One Holdings LLC DBA Wyatt James Builders completing the falling within 30 days, removing the existing handicap accessible ramps at both ends of the townhomes on Samuel Street, replacing them with ramps that comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act and that travel and terminate into Samuel Street, and three, providing a two-year maintenance bond covering the full value of the improvements. Provided, however, that the city manager may, at her discretion, extend the deadline for completion for up to an additional 30 days, and b, authorize the city manager, city attorney, and their designees to execute any necessary documents to carry out the settlement as set forth.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have any other business? As there is none